All right, streaming live.
Yep. We are live. All right. And here we go. Welcome everyone to the Howard County Board of Education Candidate Debate for District 5. I'm your host and moderator Scott Yur of Scotty's Blog. Joining us on the debate today are the following candidates running in District 5. Dr. Young Lu, Dr. Seif Raymond, Dr. Cindy Valencourt, and Jean Ryan. A few quick notes on the debate rules. I will ask a question and each candidate will have two minutes to answer. I will hold up my phone like this to indicate when you had 30 seconds remaining. I will notify the candidate to complete their sentence when time is up. I ask each candidate be respectful of time given to answer the question so that we can get through as many questions as we can in the next hour. After each candidate has had an opportunity to answer the question, each candidate will have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal for one minute in the order they were asked the original question. This rebuttal will give the candidates an opportunity to answer any questions or items mentioned by other candidates that are further clarify their position. As each candidate has joined the podcast for Scotty's blog, had an opportunity to provide instruction, introductions in the past, we're going to move directly into questions. I conducted a random ordering before the start of this event with the candidates. And the first question will go to Cindy Valencourt, followed by Jean Ryan, then Dr. Raymond, and then Dr. Lu. And with that, Cindy, here's your first, here's the first question. And this question was submitted by a blog reader. Distance learning may need to continue into the fall/winter 2020/21 school year. What recommendations do you have for the superintendent and his staff to improve the quality of distance learning? And ensure academic outcomes for all students? How will you hold the school system accountable to ensure positive student outcomes?
Well, first, thank you for doing this because of course, this campaign season has been unusual on so many levels. And it's a great opportunity to be able to discuss some of these issues with people, even though we can't go out and see them. The distance learning thing is the thing that is critical right now. In my personal view, even if school starts back in the buildings in the fall, there we have to assume that there's going to be another break. I would like to see the school system focusing all of its energy on improving and, you know, I hate to use the word perfecting, the distance learning plans that they are currently sort of beta testing. So that they can actually have new instruction and some new learning happening in the fall/winter of next year or the next school year. Because right now, we are really just trying to keep the kids from sliding too much back. And there's a lot of stuff that they're learning about what does work and what doesn't work. So I would, I think it would be a terrible disservice to the entire community if they, if the school system, the superintendent and the staff just focuses on the rest of this school year and then starts planning for a regular school year next year. They need to assume that we're going to be doing distance learning and expend all of their energy toward that. Which also comes, you know, brings up the question which I suspect you may be answering later about whether the redistricting should take effect this fall. And if they decide that they have to assume that we're going to be doing distance learning, then I would not want to see any effort being diverted from getting the distance learning plans perfected to doing the redistricting.
Okay, you timed that just perfect. Jean, you're next. You're on mute. Ha ha, see.
So I apologize. So well, so the question has to do with, you know, future potential distance learning. And that that kind of is a, brings a bunch of, a bunch of broader considerations. MSD and the Department of Education have been very clear that local school districts can adapt how education occurs, not what education occurs. And I think that's the main problem we've been hearing from so many families. Their frustration, right? One week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, that's okay. I get it. It's new. It's slow to start up. Now two months? And we have check-ins, you know, so that's a problem, right? The standard shouldn't be, let's not, you know, let's keep our kids from regressing. Our standard here in Howard County should be, let's create opportunities for our kids to achieve. So this isn't a teacher issue, right? My wife's elementary school teacher. I literally have seen her eight, 10 hours a day just now upstairs. She's on an IEP meeting. I came down and she was dressed as a unicorn. I was very confused. Apparently it's Animal Day in Montgomery County, but anyway, it's a very bizarre sight. So I see how these teachers are working feverishly. It's the lack of leadership, the lack of planning. And Howard County Public School actually has a director of preparedness just for these types of events. So I'm really surprised that it's taken this long to get any kind of interactive education. Right? Our state university, University of Maryland, they teach an entire university online. So it's not like this is unprecedented. It's not like we're trying to reinvent the wheel. It exists. And I guess I'll have more to say to that as we go through our questions, but I'll be respectful of the time because I don't want time to go.
Okay, um, Seif.
Okay, so if nothing comes out of this COVID-19 situation, I'm hoping because I have talked to teachers and principals and one of the things that they have said is the instructions, the way they are teaching now versus how the teaching is done at brick and mortar. There's a big difference in how the kids are, you know, getting educated. My kid is, one of the kid is IEP. He has gone from the, you know, class model to a one-on-one model right now. Digitizing of industry has been happening. We have seen the school systems were not ready, not just Howard County, but throughout the entire country. Even though at the higher level, once the kids go out of the school system, at the college level, you know, they are doing a lot of distance learning with the online courses and everything. So what we need to do is that we need to ensure that we are not only learning, but we are implementing these best practices. 30 years or so experience in, you know, information technology. This is what I do day in and day out. I mean, you know, we set up the graduate school online curriculum processing system. We work with universities. I myself have gone through my entire PhD with online, you know, instructions. So this is something that is going to stay. And this is something that we need to move. We are trying to prep our kids for the 21st century with the 19th century model. We need to, you know, get on with the 21st century model.
Young Lu, Dr. Lu, you're up.
Good afternoon. I want to first thank everyone for taking your time watching this debate. And I also thank Scott E for organizing this. Well, this has been a difficult time due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Distance learning is challenging. At the same time, it provides opportunities for the school system to learn more about how to use this approach to help students. We don't really know when the school will reopen. There are lots of uncertainties. So let's first assume that it's possible that in the fall, we'll still do decent learning. Is there anything we can learn? Communication is important. I think that the school system need to send out surveys, collect feedback from the families, parents, also teachers, ask their observation, which students works better during this distance learning? Is there anything we can improve? Because I also started teaching online on March of 15th because I teach at Howard County Chinese School. I also host weekly life educational talk for school children on behalf of Kappa. So basically what I have seen is there's difference between different age group. There's also individual differences. For some students, they're pretty shy. They may hesitant to participate in the classroom, but describe in this online teaching. They're willing to participate, answer questions in the chat message. And also talk with special arts teachers. You're telling me that surprisingly, some of students, they don't have behavioral problems. They can focus more. But this opportunity, we collect feedback from the parents, teachers, and also students. And also learn from other counties. So basically, we summarize what we learned and also learn from other parts of the, of the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, coming back to you, one minute to rebuttal or clarification of your statement you'd like to give.
Oh, I think Dr. Lu just nailed it. And Dr. Raymond also alluded to. It is hugely different between age levels. Dr. Raymond was successfully earned a PhD online, but that was when he was a grown up. The high, a lot of the high school kids are doing just fine. Many of the middle school kids are. And some of the kids in the, that in all grades, you're finding either are thriving or are having an unusually difficult time. So it is absolutely critical that the school system stay very closely in touch with the students and the parents to get as much information about how this is really happening and solid suggestions on how to improve.
Right, Jean, any follow-up?
I did want to echo with a lot of the other kids that I completely agree. It's not fair to paint Howard County as the system that's having these problems and everybody else isn't. So this is a national issue. However, we claim to be the best in the state, so let's be the best in the state. And Ms. Valencourt brings up a good question. How do we measure how the kids are doing? I don't know. Pass/fail is a new standard. How are we actually measuring if they're succeeding or not? I would love to hear more information from our administration about how they're measuring the effectiveness of their current plans so they can monitor for future. Thank you.
Thanks, Seif.
Well, budgeting issues are coming. I mean, you know, we've been having issues with the last decade with the thriving, thriving economy. Guess what? Come July 1st, the budget's going to be getting cut, you know, almost as like 30% like some of them are predicting. So the equity issue, you know, in place right now is gonna just, the gap's gonna only widen. With the digital learning, you can fulfill that gap. You can, you know, take care of a lot of these issues that you're having. So we need to, as Jean mentioned, we are, you know, one of the leading counties. We shouldn't be kind of, you know, waiting for somebody else to take the lead. Let's take the lead in ensuring that we come up with something in this, you know, regard.
Okay. Young Lu.
Well, this week is teacher appreciation week. First, I want to thank all the teachers because they need to take care of their children at the same time teaching our children. So one question is about the schedule because lots of working parents, they may not have time to spend time with their children during weekdays. It's difficult, especially for young children. So I think we can consider maybe having alternating schedules. Also hiring more subteachers to think, is there a night school? We cannot expect our teacher work 24/7. It's too stressful. So can we give them opportunity to seek feedback from teachers, which schedule was better for them? And also which schedule works better for the working parents, especially those essential workers, house care providers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, folks, that's it for question one. We are going to move on to question two. And question two is another one that was submitted by a blog reader. I love my blog readers. They do a great job of sending me lots of questions for all of you. And so we are in budget season as Seif Raymond mentioned just a little bit ago. And it looks like it's going to be a very difficult one for our school system. To be fair, it looks like it could be a difficult budget season for many departments, organizations, and even businesses in our area. The question for the blog reader is this. If you had to set budget priorities due to limited funds, which this current school board will, in what order would you rank the following priorities and why? GT programs, class sizes, special education? And I'm going to add a fourth category of my own to this question, which is technology. So again, how would you rank the following priorities and why? GT programs, class sizes, special education, and technology? And we will start with Jean Ryan on this.
I mute myself. And I see I'm kind of in the shadows here, so I apologize. My lighting in my office isn't that great, so I don't know if you guys can see me. So you asked how would we rank? And I think whether pandemic, whether school closure, whether online learning, class size is the number one, right? There is unequivocal evidence that shows the smaller the class size, the better their learning. That's an even more important priority now as we heard new recommendations from the CDC. And we're seeing in China that as they're opening schools, I don't know if you know Wuhan opened today. And they now have a standard square foot per student. The fire code currently calls for 20 square feet in America, educational purpose schools. We might have to increase that to 50 or 100. What's that going to do for our capacity? So because we've been packing kids into classrooms like a meat warehouse, we failed to meet their basic health and safety standards that maybe the government will now require us to enforce. So class size is very important. The rest, they're, they're all equally important, right? You talk about budget. I was repulsed by the county executive's draconian cuts to the school budget. You can't expect the school to be efficient during trying times and cut the legs out from under them. I agree, we need to be conservative with how we use tax dollars, but you don't do that at the time it comes to fund it. That's a process that happens over time over with the responsible board of education. I think it's really bordering on bankrupting our public school system because of whatever reason. May exist to justify that, but class size has to be the top priority as we move forward, especially during these health crisis times.
I mute myself. Seif.
I guess my turn, huh? So, you know, looking at those four priorities given by your blogger, I'm actually going to disagree with the person as far as that these needs to be ranked to me. Each and every one of them have equal weight and value. As a budgeting person who deals with, you know, multi-billion dollar budgets on a day in, day out basis and looking at the school budget, we have a lot of other areas that we can cut and meet every single lead because these things, you know, 124 that you have mentioned, every single thing is needed for the sake of our child to ensure that he or she is successful by the time they leave the school system. But we cannot rank them. We are, we need to look at other areas. And there are areas, there are procurement processes, there are other areas where we can look to cut. And including what we were talking about earlier in technology, technology can be integrated, used to, you know, fulfill the budgeting, you know, the savings that we need to do to provide some of the teaching that we need to do. So to me, every single one of them is equally important and I'm not going for cuts in these areas.
Okay.
So we're talking about 2021 budget, right?
Yes.
Well, there's one very large important part of the budget is still in transportation. It accounts for $47 million and the contracting service is $45 million. What if school doesn't start in the fall of 2020? Are we going to save money? If we can save lots of money, why do we need to cut all those programs? Can we just keep all of them? There are lots of uncertainties, right? Because the decision making based on new accurate updated information. There is new information coming in. We have the potential to save money in the 2020s school year. Why cut 2021? Okay, so second about ranking them, there are also uncertainties. For example, if school that not open, then class size may doesn't matter, right? No school will be overcrowded. They're all starting at home. But if school starts, then class size is a potential issue. We do distance learning. Technology is important. But what if we can get money from a federal funding COVID-19? If they can fund it, we don't have to take money out of our budget. So basically, there are opportunities, there are uncertainties. We do decision making, ranking all based on updated information. And this COVID-19 is rapidly evolving. We don't really know what have led us to, but I want the school system to put our children into forcing how, what will be the best for the children under different conditions, under different circumstances. I want all of them to thrive, all of them achieve their potential. And also this decent learning can provide opportunity for special education students because that's individualized. It may work very well for those students and also DT students. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Cindy.
Yeah, again, Dr. Lu gave me a great running board because I agree with her. There are going to be other kinds of savings within the traditional budget that will be realized because of the move to distance learning. So what's, what I've been doing and I'm going to continue to do is to continue to advocate with the existing board and administration that they take a completely fresh approach to what they're going to be doing with the budget. There are, and I believe it should also, it should start with the assumption that the kids will not be going back to brick and mortar buildings in the regular way in August. There are numerous places that there will be ongoing savings for, you know, for example, I've put out in the past. You know, we saved a lot of money on substitute teachers in the second half of this school year. You know, we have saved, we've saved a significant amount of money on fuel. We've saved money on utilities. There, there are lots of places that the monies that are involved with the school system are going to have to shift in any event because of closed buildings, not moving students. But, and in some cases, if things were to go forward the way I can envision they might, as Jean mentioned, you can't have the same classroom setup if you're going to have any kind of distancing. So we may be needing to look at things like shifts of students. And in order to make it possible for teachers who are, you know, pandemic sequestering is a lot different than distance learning because we've got the parents, the teachers who are parents also stuck at home with their own kids, trying to do their job while they're doing childcare. So this is, it's not even straightforward distance learning. It's a hybrid there. So they need to start from scratch and look at all of the different aspects of the budget.
All right, Jean, one minute for clarification and rebuttal.
Sure. So there are current opportunities to save money, right? So the Board of Ed just authorized the purchase of laptop computers, as we all know, only to later find out that we actually had laptops available, but we decided, we not wait, I decided. The Board of Education decided that it was more prudent to buy new instead of go in and get the ones we had. That seems like some reckless spending. Then we spent a quarter million dollars on FedEx deliveries. The school's doing an excellent job of delivering meals to families in need through a drive-up service, but we couldn't do that with computers. Seemed very confusing to me as well. I see the bids and contracts going out for things like air conditioning systems, HVAC systems. There's currently homeland security money available for air sanitation systems for public schools. So we should be planning to make our schools healthier and using this opportunity to seize on school improvements. I don't see that happening. I see us doing things the way we've always done it and we need a fresh new perspective. And that's what I bring to the table.
Dr. Raymond. Wait, that's right.
Can't unmute myself. All right. So yes, budgeting priorities are needed because budgeting cuts are coming. Like I said before, you know, last 10, last decade, when the economy was thriving, we were still having problems at the school level with the budgets. So guess what's going to happen with all this situation that we're currently going through? So for that, start looking at other areas. Open up all the contracts that you have. Start looking at our procurement processes. How do you award the contracts? Streamline things with, you know, integrating technology that can save you a lot of, you know, money in a lot of different areas, maybe the transportation, maybe the staffing, or whatever else you can think of. So we need to, like somebody said, think differently, think out of the box.
Dr. Lu.
Well, during difficult time, lots of business, they cannot start working. So I think our local school system actually can help them do renovations. It's provide job opportunities for workers. At the same time, we don't have to sacrifice students because they're not at school. So we can think about how to reallocate the money. So this is the capital budget. And then we also have the COVID-19 pandemic emergency fund. Think about how to help local business and also attract business into Howard County. If we are showing them that, well, right now we're providing jobs, but doing renovations, additions. They're willing to move in here, then maybe we'll have more revenues in the future inside of 90% rely on our tax. We don't want to increase taxes for homeowners. Let's attract more business and also I did steal time, help people make them earn money, let them stay in business. Thank you.
Cindy, you get the final word on this one.
Well, I would stick with the fact that it's, the entire environment is upside down. The budget from the revenue standpoint and the expenditure standpoint are just completely sideways. They have to take a look at the new environment. Technology, for example, the technology purchases that were necessary when the kids were going to be at school are different than the technology needs for when they're going to be away. The, there, there's an awful lot that is already in this budget that's, it's very complex budget. And there are things that, you know, keep in mind that they saved $15 million over the course of last year from the 2020, 2019 fiscal 2019 budget. So when we're comparing the two budgets, they really should go with actuals, not the proposed or the awarded. And then you would get a better idea of where the actual expenses are and they can alter them to fit today's environment better.
All right, that's it for question two, y'all. We are going to move on to question three. And this was again, another one sent from a blog reader. I love my blog readers. I tweaked it a little bit, but you'll get the gist of it all. None of you are currently on the board, so I feel like I can ask you this question. Our super, our current superintendent has been praised for some things he's done in the school system since taking over and criticized for other things he's been, that has happened under his leadership. A blog reader wants to know what you think of the job of our current superintendent has done since taking over from the past superintendent of the school system. And Seif, I'll start with you on this one.
So I think most of the folks that are watching the debate know how the current superintendent came with the issues with the past superintendent. So you know, what I saw and what I've seen in the last, I guess, two or three years, whatever he's been on is initially, the communication issue that we had among, or the morale issue that we had among the staff improved drastically. Well, that was very good thing. But then some of the things that he has done to date, I do not agree with it because I consider that as a lack of leadership or leadership failure in this case. By that, what I mean is when he came in, I think we were $60 million in hole because of the previous shenanigans the previous superintendent did. But the very first act that I saw from him when the budget came out was increase in administrative staff. And the salaries that were being offered and paid were more in certain cases, almost like twice as the going rate in the market. And believe me, I hired the same kind of folks every single day for myself and different clients that I have. And then the biggest, you know, thing that I've seen right now with the redistricting fiasco that we went through. As a true leader, you bring all the stakeholders in, you ensure that somebody that, especially the superintendent that has gone through this process previously understood what are the ramifications for, you know, the proposal that he's putting forward. Instead of ensuring that everybody had a buy-in, he had a buy-in from the community, from the staff and whatever. They proposed a very kind of a, you know, I don't know, experimentation kind of a plan which divided the entire community. And to me, that's a very, very, you know, big leadership failure. And he's not only responsible for the school system and the staff and the kids, but overall, because 60% of the budget goes towards the school, he should be thinking about the entire community as a whole. Sixty percent of the budget goes towards the school, he should be thinking about the entire community as a whole. Okay.
Well, um, I disagree with his redistricting approach. Because I think first, we need to focus on capacity and minimize impact on students and also. Community input is very important. Listen to the communities. Um, second, I'm um, I'm kind of disappointed by the first. When we do the communication about this decent learning, because when the technology survey was received. I was in a long email. At the end of the email, it's very difficult for. Um, parents to see and also I don't see any other language, because in Howard County, it's a very diverse community. We have students, ESOL students, and their parents may not speak English. So I heard Dr. Materano talking many times about helping these advantaged students. But ESOL students and their families are part of the community that we need to help them. So I send in my comments suggestions to the BOE and then I'm glad to see that now the email I received. Actually, at the end, they have different languages. I'm glad that he listened to the community. I also want him to keep in mind that every time. When we do decision making, keep those people in mind, how to reach out to them, how to listen to the community. Not one subset of community, but overall community, listen to all the community, that's important. Um, so. One thing I like him is about mental health is he raised mental health awareness. This is especially important during this COVID nineteen pandemic. We know how hard it is on our adults. It's especially hard for those children. March thirteenth may be the last day in school for this school year. They may not have even time to say goodbye or. Students, they don't know when they can go back school. So mental health is very important. So I hope that Materano will continue to listen to the community as a whole, not only focus on subgroup of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy.
Well, of course, I was on the board when we brought Dr. Materano in after having gone through the uh, the very, very bad years. And um, I think it's easy for people to forget how bad things were and. What an important change him coming in was. Um, he did, as was mentioned earlier. Improve morale. He was supportive of the staff, parents and community. We put an end to the litigiousness and the aggressive fighting of special ed parents. We um, he, he got the nine million dollars that had been being withheld from the. By the governor released because it was being withheld because the previous administration was not being forthcoming. Um, he identified and quantified the financial mess that we, some of us on the board knew was there, but could not get. The information about um, from the previous administration. So those were all, you know, good things. And he is a, he is a person who truly has a, a big heart and an affinity for the most vulnerable among the students. And the families. On the other hand, there have been a number of things that, you know, from the beginning and most recently. That I'm not crazy about. I think that he has fallen back into the kind of patterns that all superintendents have fallen into. He only needs to be able to count to four in order to get whatever he wants done, done. Um, I think that there's a theme that the, this, the administration and the school system has. Developed over years of going behind closed doors to try to develop what they think is going to be a perfect. Plan and then unveil it, at which time everybody who'd worked on it is invested. And everybody who's, who's being subjected to it says, well, hey, hold on, wait a minute, there was a lot we could have contributed. And um, the communication with the families in the uh, redistricting and the distance learning has been surprisingly bad. Um, I am not at all happy with the way that those big topics have been. Approached or executed.
Okay, Jean.
Thanks. So um, first off, you know, Dr. Materano, um, he has fun socks, right? We'll give him credit. He loves showing his socks off. Uh, he's awesome at social media. Love that. He's on that all day. Um, and uh. We needed, and that's what our community needed. We needed hope. And um, and he brought that hope. Oh, can you see me? It says my connection cut out.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, good. I'm sorry. Um, so he brought hope and um, and we all needed that. Uh, unfortunately, as time materialized, much like the learning distance learning plan, nothing more than hope materialized. Um, the, uh, he formed the uh, area attendance committee and um, and they made recommendations. Uh, that he did not listen to. He made his own plan. He thought he knew better. He marginalized the community. He asked for feedback and then disregarded it. Um, you know, uh, we heard special ed uh, filed a class action grievance because they didn't hire teachers. Uh, right, we saved fifteen million dollars, Ms. Valencourt's correct, because we didn't hire teachers. So that's not really savings and that's a leadership decision. That's Dr. Materano's decision. Um. He's not holding special ed accountable, right? I watched the last board meeting and um, I was uh. Very upset as a parent uh, of two children uh, in the special education system, as an advocate uh, for special education. I was so displeased with the blatant dishonesty that was represented at that meeting. And it's not semantics. It's, let's be honest, it's dishonesty. I saw no accountability. If Dr. Materano doesn't know that his subordinates aren't being truthful, that's a problem. Because there's been plenty of emails and communications, not just from me, but from hundreds of families, because I've seen them. So um, I, I really, I really am disappointed in his lack of accountability and his follow-through is lacking. But most importantly, that he's marginalized our community. Um, for what means, I don't know. So um, good luck with the socks. He's doing a great job. Not so good on everything else.
All right. Uh, safe, uh, one minute for rebuttal or clarification.
So I actually don't put the entire thing on the superintendent because we saw this with the last one. And we're seeing with this one, and we're gonna see with the next one. By that, what I mean is. The Board of Education, the board members are actually responsible for this kind of behavior. Because, you know, he started well, similar to, I don't know, I mean, you know, maybe other ones started well as well, the past one that we had. But very quickly, they realize when they sit on the board that the board lacks the leadership. The board does not have any subject matter expertise. So they take over the ship. And they start driving that ship. So once they do that, then they say there is no accountability, I can do whatever. And then you start seeing that behavior. What I mentioned before about the, you know, the morale and stuff got, got built up. This redistricting, actually, we, I saw the same thing, the fear factor from the teachers, because I talked to. Lot of teachers when we were going through the redistricting, who were feared to talk about anything because they were told not to. The word seeing the same exact behavior, we gotta see the same thing in the future.
All right. Emma.
So I think for the um, Board of Education, because the superintendent is there, the, the BOE's employee. So the board need to make sure that um. Communicate with superintendent, set expectations. And then what is the priority? For example, when I received the email from superintendent, he said that um, we're asking for delaying this. Uh, school redistricting, the reply is uh, because the school is already started and the school system have this as the priority. But what I see is during COVID nineteen pandemic. Probably will need to put more focus on the decent learning, how to improve students' mental health, reach out to communities. So I think the Board of Education need to communicate with the superintendent. So this is not all of his responsibility, but it's also part of the BOE's responsibility. But of course, we need to hold him accountable, make sure that we committed very clearly what the priority is, what's the best for our children. For the students, for their future. Thank you.
Cindy.
Well, I've always said, you know, even before Dr. Materano or the previous administration, or even, you know, back in the early two thousands. If I am unhappy with something the school system is doing, I blame, I don't, I don't blame the superintendent, I blame the board. Because that's where the buck stops. Um, if I, if I don't like stuff that the staff, when I was on the board, if I don't like stuff that the staff was producing. Then I blame the superintendent and ultimately, it comes back to blaming the board. If the board can't generate more than four people to be taking an assertive and. Controlling direction for the superintendent, it isn't surprising that they go off and. Do what they believe to be the right thing. I, all that said, I am personally very disappointed. In how the special education um, staffing, programming, the entire. Soup to nuts of how special education is currently being handled is going. It's. And it, it, that buck does stop with the superintendent and then the board.
Jean, you get the final word on this one.
The um, you know, uh, Dr. Materano, uh, like I said, brought hope, but then he, he marginalized us. But I think as I, as I think more about it, he unfortunately demoralized, as Dr. Raymond said, he demoralized his own staff, right? Hammond High School showed huge success in their achievement. Uh, you know, my old neighborhood, you know, Hammond Rocks, right? They, they are Phoenix. And they increased their ESOL, their sped, their African American graduation rate, everything went through the roof. I talked about that in a public hearing with the Board of Education when they asked for feedback from the community, how can we improve our schools? This is how, they've done it, analyze it, figure it out and improve it. They didn't, they didn't listen to me, they didn't listen to anybody. They had something that was working and they abandoned it. And that demoralizes the people that worked so hard to create that achievement. It demoralizes and minimizes the achievement of those students. Um, I, I just, it, it baffles the mind. While in an institution like that, they can't simply analyze and replicate what works and let go of what doesn't, because we do what we've always done. And that is a problem. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. We're gonna move on to the fourth and final question. Um, and this one you get from me. I'm actually asking this one. Um, and we're gonna finish this debate talking about redistricting and goodness knows, I'm gonna catch heck over it, but. I think it's still something to talk about. Now, what we're not gonna do is rehash what happened last year. That's over. But we do have another round of redistricting for high school thirteen specifically in the near future, as long as we continue to get our state funds and that gets built. What did you learn in the past process? That you will bring forward to the next round of anticipated redistricting that will happen in the school system to ensure it goes smoother and better. For the community than this last process did. Dr. Liu, we start with you.
Um, first, I think we need to rely on very accurate and up-to-date data. Because what I see from the last year's school reading is the student enrollment projection data is not accurate. Especially by polygon. If that information is inaccurate. When the plan moves students, basically, it doesn't really reflect reality. If that the case, we may end up with moving more students than necessary. We don't want to move student back and forth because still need stability, they need to develop relationship to learn. Second is, this process need to focus on addressing capacity. So for filling up. High school thirteen, we need to fill up the new school. That's why we need to move students, but. Don't move student unnecessarily. Um, third is about the process itself. We don't want to pull polygons the last minute into the game. It's not fair for them. People won't watch the process unless they are affected. They won't watch out unless they're affected. It's not fair for them. When you have a procedure, predetermined procedure, that is fair. For everyone, not just for one polygon, for all the polygons, for all the people, for all the children. And also, we need to consider that what's the best for the children, not for political beliefs. It's not what we believe is right or wrong, is what's the best for the children, ask their opinion, ask the parents' opinion. It's not we're doing this for you to know, hear from the community, learn from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy.
Well, this, this answer is in some ways the same as it would have been pre-COVID and is a little bit different post-COVID. First, the um. There, the people, the two most important things in the average American family's life is their home and their children. And redistricting for schools affects both. On a very personal level. So even though I did, you know, make suggestions to people who were um. Pro- protesting the last redistricting, that it was not an effective argument to argue about your home values. Because it's not persuasive for the purposes of the school system. It's nevertheless true that. Home values and the students' mental well-being and all of those things are incredibly important and they're important to the families. I think that the need for stability is, should be, is a right. The government should not be willy-nilly. Interfering with the stability of the lives of citizens. It should be only when it's at, it's necessary and reasonable. So I have always maintained that. Redistricting, attendance area adjustments are extremely disruptive, should be, and should only be done with great care and only. Where it is logical and reasonable. So the problem we have right now is whether to implement the redistricting that was decided on. When school starts, and since I think that the school system, whether the state makes an announcement or not. Should make a determination as to whether or not they believe there's going to be regular school in the fall. If they acknowledge that it isn't. Then they should ju- redirect any efforts going to the redistricting implementation to the distance learning. But the most important thing that I learned over three, three districting processes as a board member and in this last one. Is that you cannot start six months before it's gonna happen, give the staff four months of that and the board six weeks. To interact with the community. It needs to start in January of twenty twenty-one to be ready for. Opening high school thirteen in twenty twenty-three.
Jean.
So um, so I, I appreciate the question. Um, you talked about this last process. Um, I've been redistricted three times since two thousand eleven, not me, my children. Um, so this has been. Very real for me for a very long time and I've been uh, very active uh, against it, uh, against the practice. The first thing the new Board of Education has to do, if the right people are elected, is throw out the redistricting policy. Let's start there. Um, it lists what, a dozen different criteria, talks about equity, talks about capacity. No, really clear, capacity only. There is no socioeconomic, there's no political ideology, it's only for capacity. And even that, I think there's a better way to solve. But it needs to start with what is our vision and direction. Um, the uh, uh, we need to focus on walkers, right? We need to focus on feeder system. I think it's a great idea. Uh, I was previously, as some may know, a Board of Education member in New Jersey. We faced very similar problems. Uh, with overcapacity. As a matter of fact, we need to, uh, uh, an arsonist burned down one of our elementary schools. Uh, three months before uh, the school year started. We had to find a new school for four hundred kids. And we weren't about to put them on buses and break them up because we understood the value of community and neighborhood. So we did that. We solved that problem. Through uh, creativity and innovation, and we did it in a fiscally responsible way. We can do that same thing here. But if the standard is simply, let's do what we've always done, nothing's gonna change. So um. Uh, we need to also do a gap analysis, right? We need to understand what schools have what capabilities. So that we figure out what students uh, needs need to be met. Uh, redistricting, as we know it here, is a very uh, multi-dimensional object. And we need to really call it what it is. Do we all agree that redistricting is just about capacity? That is a good place to start the, the conversation moving forward. Thanks.
Great. Safe.
Okay, so what did I learn from the previous redistricting? Actually, nothing. Because uh, it was based on the flawed process and flawed data. You know, we're not gonna. Uh, resolve our overcrowding by redistricting ourselves out of it. There's a limit to our bricks and mortar that we have. So we need to think differently. I mean, you know, think of a perfect world. Where all the officials work together. We would never have that problem because. School board is at the tail end of the problem. So unless you kind of, you know, tap down on the problem from. The council side or the uh, county, county exec side, you're never gonna be able to catch up. And so if you keep redistricting, like I said, you only have so many resources, so many bricks and mortar that you can redistrict your way. Out of the overcrowding. So you're gonna pretty much, uh, you know, turn off your golden egg or golden goose or whatever. Which is your school system by affecting that, uh, and you know, turning people off from moving into this county. So let's say for the sake of the new schools and for the sake of the current issue that we have on hand. We need to have a community feed. We need to have a community feeder model that we understand that we have the. The buy in from the all the stakeholders, you know, when when I go in any any kind of a project. You ensure that not only that you know, you kind of do your due diligence and analysis and stuff, but. Throughout the process, before you do the production and so before you hand over, before your final decision. People are involved at all stages, so we need to ensure that, you know, there's a buy in on the feeder model that we go through. To ensure that people are aware from the very first year of their kid getting into the kindergarten to the last year of high school, where that kid's gonna end up.
Okay. Dr. Lou, you get one minute for rebuttal or clarification.
So what I have learned from the last school reading process is I examined closely the locations of the schools. I think they're not optimal. That contribute to lots of the issues, so for our future planning. Let's find good location for future schools and also avoid overdevelopment. So basically, county council need to work together with school board. To avoid this from happening in the future and also look at the location of schools carefully, so right now, if you look at the high schools in the east. You will see why some schools are overcrowded because of the locations. We don't want to run into this in the future, so that's what we want to learn, and also decent learning. What decent learning solves some of the overcrowding issues, can we provide choices to the students, right? So if we're talking, okay, time is up.
Yeah, sorry. Cindy, you're up.
I wouldn't call this rebuttal or even clarification, I have to chuckle at Jean's. Mention of the fire, because I used to, that was an example I would give was that, you know, as far as redistricting and school capacity and how to approach it. If a school of ours burned down tomorrow, we would find a place for those kids to go to school, so why can't we do that? Without a catastrophe, just to deal with overcapacity issues. That just makes, that just kind of made me chuckle a little bit, but the other thing that has come up and it's come up in not just this. Issue, but. Correct data is an enormous problem with this school system, it has been for decades, I mean, and I love that Dr. Lou is able to. Identify where it's wrong, but lots of people have been able to identify that the the data that is being used is wrong. And unable to get the school system to budge from using what is demonstrably wrong data. That is a challenge for the next Board of Education.
Jean. One minute.
Thanks, so. I I would agree with Ms. Valencourt and and I would respectfully ask that question right back, why hasn't past boards found solutions then? If it's so easy, it's not easy, right, you need innovation, you need to be imaginative. You need leadership, you need to set the direction, and that's what I did when I was a board member collaboratively with my other board members. We're running out of space in Howard County for new schools and anybody that says otherwise really just isn't living in the same world, I think we can all agree. That where we need schools, there isn't space, so that's when you need to look at what physical spaces are available that you can use as schools. And so, for example, in New Jersey, I looked to see that same question, that's where I found usable school space. And I don't have the time to go into, but I welcome the opportunity to do so, but here in Howard County, I found similar opportunities, so why hasn't a a past board event? Or even the current board event explored other physical spaces to keep children in that keeps them safe and keeps neighborhoods together? I don't know, but hopefully, if I'm elected, I'll I'll do just that, I'll ask those hard questions, get honest answers, thanks.
Safe, you get the last word on this question.
So I I think as a as a board member and as a community member, we need to kind of look at that as a holistic approach, you know. Look at the county exec, they can do something about that. By ensuring that they're looking at different revenue streams, maybe attracting businesses to get the revenue rather than building new residential buildings. County council, maybe, you know, look at the apple discussion that's going on from three to seven year in the areas where. We shouldn't be building new residential, on the Board of Education side of the game. You know, we can do a lot of technology integration to fulfill, to solve some of the overcrowding issue, we can. Ensure the decisions that we're making for the next schools, whenever we are ready, whenever we are funded. Are going in the places where the schools are needed the most. So that's the things that we can do collaboratively as a board member and as a community, and that's how we're gonna be start humming to the right direction.
Great, all right, thank you all for that, look, we're gonna use the remainder of our time, because we're right at an hour almost. For the candidates to provide any final comments to those watching online either today or later on. To the voters in District Five, any final things that you want to say, each of you have two minutes, we're gonna go back to the beginning of the order and Cindy, you will start us off.
Two minutes.
Yes.
Anything, as a as a speech to directly to voters. Anything that you are counting on as the reason that you're gonna vote for one of of any of us. You should do your own independent research and find out. How verifiable those skills or that experience is. It's important, especially in this campaign season, when. There have been so few opportunities for the groups to get together and to to speak publicly and to. Answer questions and get feedback and, you know, different kinds of back and forth that that ultimately in a campaign. Susses out what the skills are, what the opinions are, what the plans are of any individual board member, so. It's really in this cycle on the individual voters to do their due diligence more actively than in previous. Campaigns that they probably had to do, I, there's an awful lot, I spent eight years on the board, as many people know. Six of those years as a minority of one and sometimes two. The the structure of that board was such that. Well, eventually, the public. Removed all of the incumbents who were up for reelection and I spent the last two years. Help helping to lead a board that made some dramatic and bold and decisive action. That changed the landscape, which is what I thought I was leaving in good hands when I left in twenty eighteen, and I've been seeing it. Go back to old bad habits and old processes and old ways of thinking that are very distressing to me, so I think it's really important that. The people who. Went in twenty twenty. Take decisive action and take retake control of the school system, thank you.
Thank you. Jean.
Thanks, Scott. You know, I think the biggest thing I I'd wanna tell voters is. Is what we've been feeling all along, which is this is our school system, right, we are in control of it, this is our opportunity. To cast our beliefs about who should lead us into the future, we can't blame the Board of Ed, we can't blame. The school administration, not at this moment in time, because this is our time to to let our voices be heard. I I would absolutely concur with Ms. Valencourt and and my fellow candidates. That we need to do our homework, we need to find out who we want to represent us, right, we need to make informed decisions. As some may have heard, I was not too long ago selected out of a candidate pool of thirty three thousand people. By George Washington University for a public administration leadership award. Because of my fresh ideas, my different perspective, I solve problems that seemingly were unsolvable for a very long time and affecting an entire state. I look forward to bringing that same skill set to our our community here, it's not going to be easy, but it's there if we want it, and we just need to want it bad enough. So I've committed to be transparent and to be effective, right, I have no desire to do anything more than this school board and to be as effective as possible for all of our children. So I I look forward to the voters taking action one way or another, and ultimately, the outcome, I have high hopes for our new Board of Education, thanks.
Thank you, Jean, Dr. Saifren.
Okay, so Scott, thank you for hosting the event. If you guys need to get more information, you can go to my website, WWW. Vote for, which is number four, Raymond, R E H M E N dot com. So I'm for the last couple of months, I've been, I guess, helping my kids, so I've become a teacher, so I give them a lot of examples as well. To understand some of the things that I'm trying to explain to them, but to me, I mean, you know, this. Board of Education right now is like a. Seven four seven plane that we're trying to steer. And at the board level, we're looking for professional pilots, right? And. We say, okay, we need professional pilots to run to ensure that the that plane continue on continues on flying. But what we end up doing is we end up hiring people that say, okay, I play the video game, so I. Know how to fly the plane and we say, come on on the board, you know, you're a board member, so unless and until we. You know, get the experienced people that are needed for the skill sets that are needed the most right now. We're not gonna be able to steer that, you know, big ship, the big plane, the right way. Because accountability and transparency, we're not gonna be able to create that, create that just by, you know, talking about it. Budgeting is not gonna get resolved just because we can talk well about it, it's the thing that you learn day in and day out. And this is what I have been doing for the last thirty years, this is what I do every single day, we go in in agencies. We look at their processes, we look at how we can streamline and how we can effectively and ensure that, you know, we can do the. You can streamline, you know, their processes to ensure that, you know, they're doing better than when we came in, so. In order for us, in order for our, you know, kids. To continue on thriving with the school system that we currently have, we need to look at, you know, what we need right now with a billion dollar. School budget right now, you know, with the almost what eighty six hundred staff and stuff, we need to make sure that we hire. Or we bring the right people on the board that can keep that school board going, thank you so much.
Thank you, and Dr. Yunlu, you get the 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 final closing remarks from candidates.
Well, thank you, everyone for watching, I know all of you are very busy and this is a very difficult time, thank you again. So I'm Dr. Yunlu, I hope you will vote for Lu. I'm asking for your vote because I want to serve you in the next several years, I want to save all the families in Howard County and your children, the communities. So I'm a mother of two H C P S S students, I'm also teaching mathematics at Howard County Chinese School on Sundays. So I work as a statistician for Federal Public Health Agency. I also have about ten years experience in. Federal acquisition certification, contract officer representative, so I got directly involved in procurement process. I also serve on the BoE Operating Review Budget Committee. And I read the budget from the first page to the end, look at number. You can see I spend lots of time understanding school system and I'm willing to learn. I also have open mind because disagreement can be common, it's okay to have different perspectives. And opinions, we can just need to learn how to listen to each other, how to hear, how to see from other people's perspective and move forward. Collaboratively, always work together, Howard County is one big family, especially during this difficult time. You can see people come out together, working together, donating food, donating. Masks. To healthcare providers, first responders, help local business, let's work together, we can do it as one big family. We don't have to be divided. Howard County is our home. We can all overcome this, thank you, and hope you will vote for Lu, thanks again, Scott.
Look, I wanna personally thank all the candidates for that participated today for taking time out of your day to do this. And honestly, more than anything, working together as a group to to come up with a time that worked for everybody so that we could do this with all the candidates. And honestly, from the bottom of my heart, I thank y'all very, very much for that, and I wish you all the very best in the upcoming primary. For anyone still listening, there are more debates on the schedule, District Three is scheduled to happen Friday at five thirty. District True, District Two will happen Saturday at ten o'clock, I hope all that, all of you that are watching, that are interested, tune in. And that's all I have for you today, this is Scotty signing off.